Are we set? All right, it is six o'clock and we all get our city council work session underway. We have one topic on our agenda, which is the 2024 to 2028 Capital Improvement Program, CIP, discussion with Laura Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. And I sent you all an email, but my husband managed to get COVID after three years. And so we're spending a lot of time apart, but I will be masked this evening. So it's strange how quickly we don't get used or forget these things and how much I love that, how they fog up my glasses. But anyway, so yes, this evening, as the mayor mentioned, don't ignore, don't pay attention, don't pay attention to the date on the front of the presentation, because apparently we are planning for a lot of years into the future. So we'll skip right over that, kind of talk briefly about what our agenda will be in our work session this evening. We'll just touch briefly on kind of total asset considerations, which we have been talking about for the last several years. I want to go provide a quick overview of the debt that's carried in the CIP funds as most of the city's debt obligations are supported through the Capital Improvement Program. Touch a little bit on some of the highlights and issues in the 2024 Capital Improvement Program for Stormwater Streets and Parks and Recreation. Then we'll take a quick look at the review of the remaining budget calendar. So I'll start into all of this, and if you will, next slide, please. I do have at your place a copy of the presentation updated, outstanding debt summary, which I did not include in the packet, and then updated Street, Stormwater, and Parks and Recreation Program plans. And I'll highlight this when we're in those program areas and we will update the packet in the morning. But we did find in our just kind of review this week and late yesterday afternoon, we found a couple of errors in those that we've corrected. So over the last several years, we've really made a concerted effort to think about total assets in the city, not just streets and stormwater channels and corrugated metal pipe and the community center and the outdoor pool, et cetera. So we've kind of categorized the assets that we have as a city into these broad categories. So under the streets category, we consider the 10-year residential street plan and program that we have. We look at the Cars Project, which is cost sharing with the county for certain major arterials, bridges, sidewalks, traffic signals, and other traffic or pedestrian-related improvements. In the Stormwater category, we look at asset inventory and condition ratings. We'll talk a little bit more about a master plan, Stormwater Master Plan, that's included in the five-year CIP Channel Maintenance Program. So you may recall that in this year's budget, we actually increased the budget from $10,000 to $20,000 every other year to do more work and just keeping brush and debris cleared out of the, what I would call, well, really all of the creek channels, but they're on a rotating cycle. We still aren't ahead of all of that, and I don't know that we will ever be all the way ahead of that. Brush and the trees and the things come back pretty quickly, but certainly has made a difference and we'll continue to focus on that. Then we look at larger-scale channel maintenance and repairs. We look at how stormwater integrates with the street program. So as we are doing, as we know, most of the projects that we're doing now, particularly on the residential side, are full-depth reconstruction. And part of what drives the costs that we're seeing on the full-depth reconstruction is the stormwater that's required to either be replaced or integrated into, because it didn't exist in the first place, with those street projects. In parks, I think, and we'll touch on it again, I think the memo, we tried to really emphasize the major shift that we've seen from the last 10-year Parks and Recreation Sales Tax to the next, the plan for the next 10 years, and shifting that focus to the outdoor parks specifically, while still maintaining the facilities that we have in the Powell Community Center and the Mission Family Aquatic Center. Parks assets also include our trails, both within our parks, so those get taken care of and addressed as part of outdoor park improvements, but also the Rock Creek Trail. And then green space acquisition, when we have the chance, at least keeping it on the radar is something we want to think about. The public buildings and facilities category, that includes City Hall, the police station, Public Works, the farmer's market, public parking lots, Johnson Drive Streetscape, our tree canopy, and our streetlight network. And those, many of those assets are not, there really none of those assets are handled within the five-year Capital Improvement Program. They're sort of woven into the general fund and some of the other funds that the city budgets for. In terms of technology assets, we recently finally completed the transition to our new court software, getting ready to kick off the implementation of the building permitting software, looking at some issues with e-ticketing, ongoing hardware and replacement upgrades, and still then the big one looming out there is the financial management software upgrade. And then on the vehicles and equipment side, we maintain 10-year equipment replacement schedules for all of our vehicles and equipment. And we will push, you've seen us push where appropriate, or where a vehicle maybe has more useful life, try to maximize that as much as possible, while balancing that against ongoing maintenance expenses and considerations. And then we continue to evaluate that based on the programs and the services that we have identified as priorities. So we continue to work really in all of these categories, and we continue to sort of assess the threats and opportunities that we have to our success in building out sort of that total asset inventory or asset management plan. And as I think you all know, it's sort of a constant rebalancing of our priorities, depending on where we are in any given year. So next two slides, please. So now I'd like to touch just a little bit on debt in the CIP. Included some information in your memo about the debt service, both in 2023 and in 2024. And then the handout that I put at your place allows you to kind of see it. Sometimes it's helpful for me to see all of our existing CIP debt on one page. And so that's what this one-page handout is reflective of. So as you know, we have tried to use debt very consciously throughout the years to address deferred infrastructure, to leverage grant or outside funding opportunities or complete projects where we just can't cash flow that in one- or two-year period. We have, the majority of our debt continues to be on the stormwater side, reflective still of $30-plus million worth of stormwater improvements that have been made since about 2007. The 2023 debt service schedule has been updated to include the 2022A issue that we brought forward in December of 2022, following renewal of the Parks and Recreation Sales Tax in September of last year. The council had asked staff to, after successful renewal of the street sales tax and Parks and Recreation Sales Tax, to look at potential debt financing opportunities so that we could accelerate the outdoor park improvements to allow for the completion of Waterworks Park and Phase Two of Mohawk in particular, along with funding that we knew there was a funding gap for the Fox Ridge project, just because of its size. The good news is in 2023, we're actually retiring three debt issues. A small one in the general fund for the Streetlight Acquisition back from 2013. And then this will be the last payment that we make on the M-FAC improvements. That was, I think you may recall, the primary driver of the Parks and Recreation Sales Tax recommendation 10 years ago. And we issued that debt 10-year note, and it has taken about 60% of the annual sales tax revenues from Parks and Recreation to repay that debt. But that debt issue will retire at the end of this year. And then also kind of a combined street and stormwater debt issue that was related to the $10.8 million reconstruction of Johnson Drive between Lamar and Knoll back in 2013 and 2014. So after the 2013A issue is retired, the only debt service that the general fund will carry is for the Facility Conservation Improvement Fund or project, and that's reflected by 2021A, not included here because it's not a CIP-related expense. That debt retires in 2036. You may recall, we did a 15-year debt amortization schedule on that. So.
That one also includes essentially guaranteed payback, correct?
Guaranteed payback for a certain period of, yes, initial, I mean, within the contract that we have, I think it's three, first three years is guaranteed to meet their projections. So all of the debt, as it currently stands, which is 13.72 million, that's supported by the capital project funds, will retire by 2033. So we have continued to really try to be very aggressive in managing our debt. And at this point, we don't have any plans to issue debt in 2024 for capital infrastructure projects. We know, and as we walk through the programs for both stormwater and streets, we have a couple of big projects that are included in the five-year CIP that turn our ending fund balances upside down. And so we will have to engage, both of those really begin in 2026. And so we'll have to really look at what opportunities we have for financing those. And again, we'll touch on some of those specifics in each of the specific program plan areas. So we'll kind of jump right in, unless anybody has any questions about debt. Total debt service payments out of the Capital Improvement Funds in 2024 will total about $3.1 million. If we don't have any questions on debt, I'll kind of move into stormwater. We'll start next slide, please. There we go. Start with kind of the revenue sources in each of the funds. So the Stormwater Program Plan is supported primarily by the Stormwater Utility Fee, also by special assessment revenues that are assessed specifically at the Gateway Project Site, and then Drainage District revenues from Rock Creek Drainage District Number One, which is exclusively the Gateway Site, and then Rock Creek Drainage District Number Two, which runs from Roll and Drive all the way to Lamar and follows, essentially follows the creek channel. So annual revenues with a $600,000 special assessment are about 3.2. Without that special assessment, about 2.6. And you may have noted in the Stormwater Program Plan for 2024 through 2028, we did not reflect any of the special benefit district revenues coming in. And that's reflective of the situation that we're experiencing right now with the Gateway Project. If that project comes back online or something else happens there, we'll have the opportunity. Those funds are still due us, but the county has now extended the time period within which they force the issue and the payment of those, the Stormwater Utility or the special assessment from three years to five years that may be complicated by the foreclosure action. So number of things at play, so we just took it off the table so we could really look at the picture and start planning for what happens. You will see that there, there is about half of that stormwater assessment that has already been received. So the December payment from last year was distributed to us in 2023. So we do have that 270, almost $273,000. Yes?
If there is foreclosure, does the bank, is the bank, is the owner of the property responsible for that assessment?
Whoever, yes, whoever becomes the owner of the property would be responsible for the assessment.
And would they be responsible for all the back?
Yes.
Debt?
Yes.
And does that get paid at the time of closing, or how does it?
I don't know.
Okay.
It's way too early to, that, that depends on how that would all be negotiated out in that process.
Okay, thank you.
But it is, again, that's still, those are still revenues that will be due and payable to us. But as you might imagine, that has a pretty significant impact, at least in future years, on the Stormwater Program. We had structured the Stormwater Utility Fee several years ago to essentially cover debt service. And then with the payment of the special benefit revenues, we had been able to sort of build up some fund balances, and we're looking forward to tackling some, both smaller-scale sort of neighborhood localized level drainage projects, as well as some of those in the larger creek channel. So if we just look really, I would turn your attention to your program plan at your place for stormwater. And if you look at kind of the bottom line, you'll see really through the end of 2024 that we have positive fund balances and as it relates to stormwater. About one point, $1 million estimated. That is because they have been current on the special benefit payments for the last several years. And we were sort of holding and waiting to anticipate some projects. You see in 2025, and then in the remaining years of this five-year program plan, that we do go upside down in terms of fund balances. The primary contributors to that are channel repairs to Rock Creek Channel from Maple to Woodson or Outlook to Woodson, 1.4 in design permitting and acquisition, and then about 7.2 million. And that's based on some preliminary estimates that we've seen out of the PPS that is in progress with SMAC. We don't have that final report. We expect to have that and bring that forward later this fall, but we wanted to put those placeholders in, in the project. And then you'll also see, there's a 5424 Maple Concrete Channel Repair that's about 700,000, and then Rock Creek Channel from Lamar to Woodson at about $3.3 million. So again, larger-scale projects, we don't know really yet what opportunities we might have for phasing or how we might want to really approach those, but we did want to, at least. So we have the picture and we know what we may be up against or working toward, include those in the five-year plan. You will see also under capital projects, in 2023, we've added $400,000 to deal with the failed RCB box under the property that is just north of Beverly Park. We've talked about that. Celia gave a presentation a couple of months ago. That is in design currently, but we do need to proceed. I think we talked about sort of the emergency nature of that. It could be ultimately impacted in the long term and basically one section of pipe abandoned and rerouted if the Mill House project proceeds. But we don't feel like we can wait until that time to proceed with the project. So that has been included in the plan. We do have funds available to do that. And then you will see, also in 2023, based on the presentation that you heard about the smaller, more localized stormwater projects, we've recommended that we move forward with four of those that scored the highest priority in this year. So we feel like it's important as we can to continue to address those. And then you see your debt service. In 2024, we're really looking at design of that Maple Concrete Channel Repair, a Stormwater Master Plan, which we've recommended. I touched on it briefly in, in your memo. But as you know, we really have a number of deteriorated channels, structures that are located within the floodplain still, corrugated metal pipe that continues to age and fail, undersized stormwater pipe in some areas, or areas with no stormwater pipe or pipe that's located under buildings. Or a lot of interconnections and inner relationships between both public and private stormwater. So the Stormwater Master Plan, which we could apply for a grant to pay 50% of that master plan through the Corps of Engineers, would allow us to really take that comprehensive look and help us prioritize projects and recommend funding to address those stormwater issues. We're also continuing to inventory with the county, just the condition of our pipes. So the more we know and can understand the condition and plan for the replacement of that storm, stormwater, hopefully the fewer times we have to come to you and ask for emergency repairs, because we have seen calls that develop. So that master plan and the corresponding grant revenues have been shown in the next couple of years. So be happy to stop there if anybody has any questions, comments about the Stormwater Program Plan.
Debbie, as it relates to stormwater and then ongoing with streets, will we ever have an ability to look at kind of a listing of all the current materials they're using on stormwater projects, whether it be the pipes, the infrastructure itself, to see how much we're getting for our money? Because it seems like on the street asset program also, we're having to go back several times and look at things. And I'm just wondering what materials we're using, if we're, any technology has come out with new materials that are more long-lasting based on the traffic flow and things like that, and same with stormwater on the pipes. Celia would probably have a really good idea of what materials need to be used.
She wouldn't, and she's not here with us yet this evening. I mean, we know the materials because we're specific whenever we bid a project, whether that is the type of concrete, the type of aggregate mix, you know, the type of pipe. You know, I would say the biggest thing that we're struggling against now and the cost that we're up against is the fact that we deferred the maintenance on things for 30, 40, 50 years. And it's well past its useful life. And you're right, technology has changed. So I think we do, we do work toward that. And we'll continue to do that, but I think just we're better at it and we have a plan. The biggest thing that will help us in the future is staying committed to a plan for ongoing maintenance of that. So it's always when you let it get to its worst point, or the point of failure, is always going to be more expensive than if we can maintain it along the way more effectively.
And we do currently have a rating on all the pipes, correct?
I believe we don't, I believe there are still some pipes that are not yet rated, and that's what we're working on to, to get the rating. We've been able to take advantage of funding through the county's SMAC program to do some of those inventories. They have some limitations on the type of pipes that they will allow you to incorporate into that inventory process, which is also part of the reason why we would look at this additional larger citywide comprehensive stormwater master plan. It would certainly allow us to pick up those pipes or structures which may not qualify for funding through the county.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on then to the street program. What, you're gonna stay on the same slide? I'm kind of doing, I should have done a slide for each program area. But you can flip back and forth on your pages and your, your presentation. So on the street, in the street program, we have really three sources of revenue. We have still a gas tax that's distributed from the state. We have the 3.8 cent retail sales tax that's dedicated to street maintenance. It was renewed in September of 2021 for 10 years. And then we have the mills dedicated to street repair and maintenance that are transferred out of the general fund and into the Capital Improvement Fund. Currently, annual revenues supporting the street program plan are about $2.6 million. In addition, and if we look at the street program plan, so those are with the, so the property tax, although it's, or the property tax is certainly within our control each year as we go through the budget process to think about what projects we have on the horizon, what priorities we have that are competing potentially in the general fund and how much we want to be able to allocate. We talked last year about transitioning away from thinking about it in terms of a set number of mills, but really looking at it more specifically with the street projects and programs that we have in front of us in any particular year. The gas tax and the 3.8 cent sales tax obviously was within our control, but now we're set with that for the next nine years. So our next opportunity to touch that and adjust that would be in 2031. We also have, council may recall that in addition to the mills that were transferred in 2023, which were 1.4, we increased that, so that was an increase over previous, the previous year of almost $300,000 in additional mills that were dedicated to the street program. And then we dedicated another $500,000 as we looked at using the ARPA funds to allocate against our lost revenues and then dedicate some of that additional general fund, excess fund balance to priority projects, both of the council and those things identified by residents through our Direction Finder survey process. Then we also move into sort of the external revenue, the sources on the street side that we don't control. So those are cars reimbursements, that special highway or gas tax. We show, you'll see some SMAC reimbursements, and this is, each year we have the opportunity to submit for a project reimbursement for the stormwater components related to particular street projects. And Celia has been very effective at getting those applications in, and so we've been able to help offset. So in 2023, some of that is inventory money and some of that is street project money. And then in 2024, that is related to street, residential street improvements. Then we have kind of, when we do joint projects with other cities as it relates to Cars Projects, we will manage the project and then you'll see coming forward for 2024, the Roe Avenue Project, you'll see an interlocal that will include Fairway, Rollin Park, Prairie Village, and Mission, so that those cities are committed to their proportionate share of those improvements. You'll see in 2022, we had the bond proceeds from that 2022A issue that roll in. You'll also see in some out years and kind of the grants and other outside funding category, you'll see the $6 million in 2026. That is our STP or Surface Transportation Program grant that we were awarded through the Mid-America Regional Council for the Lamar, or Johnson Drive Lamar to Metcalf Project. And then you can kind of see, as we move down into the capital projects, we have kind of the larger-scale Cars Project or major arterial projects, the largest of which Fox Ridge is currently under completion, the Melan overlay with Roe Avenue. The Johnson Drive Project Design is started, is slated to begin in 2024. Design is estimated at about $950,000. Then you'll see about $1.1 million for easement acquisition for that project and then 12.3 for the actual construction. So that's the big project that we need to begin planning for and get that designed. We are still evaluating issues related to the Stormwater Interceptor and whether it makes sense to continue that large interceptor that was placed under the first section of the Johnson Drive rehabilitation, whether our channel system or stormwater system would benefit from that expense. It's about $2.5 million of that 12.3 million. If in fact we move forward with that interceptor, we may have the opportunity to apply for SMAC funding. When we did the first phase of Johnson Drive, we had STP funding, we also had SMAC funding, and we had Cars funding. So that's kind of still up in the air to be decided and then probably over the course of the next year. And then we have the potential to take advantage of some additional outside funding or leverage those dollars for that project. Residential Street Program, as you know, we work from pavement condition inventory that was done in 2017, updated slightly in 2020, and then just this last year, we moved forward with a full update of that plan. I did think it was interesting to note, and I included it in the memo, that in the 2017 report, the overall pavement condition rating given to city streets was 56.1. In 2023, the report indicates that overall rating had increased to 61.4, which is about a 10% increase. So it's slow incremental progress, but we're making progress in the right direction as it relates to, I think, the overall condition rating on our street. So we do have that report back from GEI Consultants, kind of going through that more in-depth. After an initial review, there weren't any surprises in terms of streets that had deteriorated significantly in terms of their PCI over where they were in the 2017 report. So we didn't need to sort of reshuffle the deck in terms of streets that we have anticipated in the 10-year residential street maintenance program. So I think you'll recall, last year we talked about really it's beneficial if we look at updating that PCI rating about every five years, kind of helps us keep closer eye on the condition. And I think Councilmember Crane, that's one of those tools. In addition to looking at the materials that are going in, you know, that we, we have the opportunity to evaluate that performance over time as we're looking, at least on the street side. The, there's currently one street project that's included in the 2024, anticipated in the 2024 program, and that is 55th Street. You may recall that we accelerated the design for that project last year. And we are still looking, Celia and I were just talking earlier this week about, I mean, if you look in 2024- we are still looking. Celia and I were just talking earlier this week about, I mean, if you look in twenty twenty four at the bottom or and we do have a three hundred and fifty five thousand dollar deficit in funding. Right now, we're carrying about that much in sidewalk curb and sidewalk program over the course of those two years. I think as we continue to refine some things, that number will get better, but we'll continue to kind of look at that. Keep an eye on that, that number. Also, I have not, you'll see that I have not increased that transfer out of the general fund. I left it flat or consistent with what it was this year and the twenty twenty three budget. So that's certainly as we, in the next couple of weeks, move through the general fund conversation, we kind of know what that impact is. And we can make some decisions about the amount of that transfer as well. So I think there are opportunities to address that deficit in a variety of different ways in the street program. Any questions about? Well, I did. I did want to touch. So we've got the pedestrian activated stop signs are in design. We're currently looking at whether or not we need to acquire any easements to get those placed appropriately on the property. But we would anticipate that those will be installed yet this year in twenty twenty three.
Laura, could I just ask you a quick question on the the Fox Ridge, the fifty first to Lamar, the the amount for twenty twenty three, is that working, the project working in concert with the apartments going in at the same time? Or what is our timing between the establishment of that apartment complex and the street project?
But we don't have the fifty first. Right now, the Fox Ridge project stops at fifty first Street. So in this five year plan, we do not have specifically a fifty first Street project included. That's one of the things that we've talked about. So I, because we don't know, and I'm assuming we haven't heard anything more on that project. I think that's in just kind of a holding pattern. So we should be able, obviously, there's not going to be impacts with construction of that project and and our work on the Fox Ridge project, which I believe is anticipated to be completed at the end of this year. In the future, what we had talked about was potentially, we don't think that the traffic counts would warrant or allow us to make application to the county to include fifty first Street as a cars route. And one of the things we've talked about for the last couple of years is if if that project or when that project develops, we would be able to look at those traffic counts and potentially then be able to add that to the cars list, and then we would be eligible to apply for cars funding for that. Ben, do you have a question?
I see on the residential street program, sort of kept that flat throughout the remainder of the plan is. Do we think that's realistic or?
It's it's not based on what we've seen. So philosophically, the the other thing is that, you know, we have tried to design ahead. We don't have any projects currently included in this in design. So that's something that I think we'll have to continue to work on and refine as we go through this process. You know, we originally built that program trying to anticipate about two million dollars a year of the sales tax revenue or revenues being earmarked for the residential street program. We've seen some pretty significant cost increases, not just in streets, but in every project that we're tackling for the last year. So I think we will have to kind of keep an eye on that. You know, one of the things that we had had talked about, and again, the the gateway project has an impact not just on the street side, but also on this or on the stormwater side, but also on the street side and park side based on our inability now to capture dedicated sales tax revenues that would have helped kind of boost boost those projects. So again, certainly, I think we have, that's one of the things that we want to look at as we have conversations about really at on the street side, the only thing, as I mentioned, within our control at this point is mills dedicated to that.
Right. Yeah, I just, I don't know what kind of data collection it takes to figure out what, you know, what it costs to keep that PCI number going the right way. You know, that's probably a tricky question. Doesn't seem like it'll stay flat to me.
No, I mean, I think, I mean, the other thing is you're doing some major. You know, we, I don't think we've broken down really the PCI rating. We look at it overall. We haven't broken it down really between the arterials and the and the then the residential streets. The investments that we make in the arterials help our overall PCI rating. But certainly, that's not the, you know, that I know that the council really wants that impact within the neighborhoods as well.
And part of the issue is for twenty twenty four fifty fifth Street is just a very expensive project, right?
It is a very expensive project. So I don't know, you know, we're we're still trying to work through. Is that something that we would want to recommend phasing on? We don't have the design quite yet complete. Mostly, we're mostly through that design process, and once we see that, we can have a more sort of informed conversation with you all about how we tackle that and whether we try to do that all in one year. Or whether we try to phase a portion of that. Any other questions on the street program? Okay, then Parks and Recreation. Get to, and I did include just for your reference, the presentation that Celia had done in April on those localized stormwater projects. I had to refresh my memory about what what they were, but I hope that was helpful as you looked at the ones that we've funded. Again, we would like to continue to tackle those. But it's just going to depend on the revenues that, you know, that we have available. One thing I didn't mention on the stormwater side is that, you know, the the thing that's completely within your control each year as a part of the annual budget process is our stormwater utility fee. That rate hasn't really been adjusted since twenty seventeen. We are definitely higher in terms of our stormwater utility fee than many other cities, in part because of our small geographic area and the magnitude of the stormwater issues that we have. But that's always an option as well, a one dollar a month increase in the stormwater utility rate. So twelve dollars a year for a single family property owner generates about ninety two thousand dollars. So when you look at some of the size and scale of these projects that are facing us, it takes a lot of increase there to, you know, to make some significant progress. But that's certainly an option that we could look at. We didn't make, we didn't include an increase in that in this year. Again, I think waiting to sort of see if we can get some resolution and maybe a clear picture of what what's happening at the gateway by the end of the year. And I think as we go into next year's budget process, we may be better equipped to make decisions about increases or potential increases in stormwater utility fees.
Laura, can you, is that the stormwater fee calculated on land area or is?
It is for each single family property. It's based on an estimate of twenty six hundred square feet of impervious surface. So it's not an exact science. But generally, so every every single family parcel is assessed one ERU, which is equivalent to twenty six hundred square feet. And I can't ever remember what twenty eight or twenty nine, it's three hundred and thirty six dollars a year. And then what we do for commercial properties is we look at, we actually go in and sort of measure the rooftop, the parking area, the impervious surface, divide that by twenty six hundred and determine how many then equivalent ERUs are assessed back to that property.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, moving on then to Parks and Recreation. The Parks and Recreation Program Plan addresses our capital infrastructure needs in our eight outdoor parks. The Community Center, the Mission Family Aquatic Center and the trails located throughout Mission, which is primarily the Rock Creek Trail. So funded through the three eight cent sales tax, which we renewed in September of twenty twenty two, generating about one point one million dollars annually. And then Special Parks and Recreation Funds, which are a third of the alcohol tax that is distributed by the state. And that's actually slightly higher at about a hun- estimated at about a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars annually. So last year, obviously, the Parks and Recreation Program Plan was influenced by a variety of things, including the pending renewal and expiration of the sales tax. Also, the kind of the lingering revenue effects of the pandemic at the community center and the desire to move forward aggressively with outdoor park improvements that had been identified through our public facing conceptual park planning process. So as we evaluated all of that, you know that the council decided last year to put that three eight cent sales tax on the ballot for renewal. We had some discussion around what the appropriate rate was, and I think with the reduction in the food sales tax, ultimately, the conclusion was to maintain it at that three eight cent rate with the goal of really making progress in our outdoor park system improvements. So I still always like to share this number, but we approved that and renewed that sales tax with an eighty six percent voter approval rating, which is phenomenal. So I think it's validation that the plan was right. And so continuing to make progress on that plan is very important. We already kind of touched on the debt that was issued in December of twenty twenty two to allow us to accelerate some of those projects. Again, Waterworks Park in particular, Mohawk Phase Two and potentially Streamway Park pending construction costs or cost escalation on those other projects. Mohawk Park Phase One improvements are nearing completion. Earlier this month, Penn had reported that they would be completed by June nineteenth. We're at June twenty first, and we're not quite done yet. As I understand it, there were some delays in some doors, which are now finally on site. And so July seventeen, I think, is the estimated completion date for that. Design continues for Phase Two. And at this, this month's committee meetings, we also talked about the design for the Waterworks Park improvements that plan is going to the Planning Commission next Monday evening. And then we will be ready to take that out to bid and bring that back to the council later this fall. The goal again was to really get the park improvements done and to coincide with when the students come back to Russian in the fall of twenty twenty four. So our goal is really trying to maximize funds wherever, whenever, however possible through the use of grants, potential fundraising opportunities or project phasing where it's appropriate. Sometimes, as in Waterworks Park, phasing isn't necessarily feasible. Specifically, the Parks and Recreation Program Plan that was included in this packet anticipates a fundraising effort and fundraising in the amount of about two hundred thousand dollars for the playground at Mohawk. As we went through that stakeholder and that public conceptual planning process, there were some residents that stepped forward and expressed an interest in assisting or fundraising for that. We, I know Penn has been working and been back in contact, and I think we're ready to far, just about far enough along in design to really engage in that serious conversation. Prior to that, obviously, we'll bring that back to you all, but it's it's exciting to see some of our residents interested in helping to support the improvements that we're making and or stretch dollars as far as we can. Similar to the street side, you may remember that in twenty twenty three, the council allocated an additional three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the general fund for park improvements, and that's in addition to the two hundred thousand dollars that had been held as kind of an earmark for construction of a dog park that's currently planned in Streamway. We talked at the committee meeting this month about some of the cost escalation that we've seen in Waterworks Park and some of the changes and some increases in that price that you all were generally supportive of to move that forward. I will tell you, we also opened Broadmoor Park Trail Bids last week, and the the low bid came in at three hundred and six thousand nine hundred and thirty five dollars, which was six, one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars over the budget. We're about sixty percent. The bids ranged from a high of about eight hundred and fifty, eight fifty to three oh six. We do feel like we had done a bid, a base bid, which was just the southeast corner, that area of the trail that's in the worst condition. It was about eighty nine thousand dollars of that. We really feel like, based on the feedback we had from Broadmoor Park and wanting to make sure that we are making important investments in all of our park system that we've feel like, and you'll see that recommendation coming forward at the July fifth committee meeting to move ahead with construction of that trail in Broadmoor Park. We are still waiting. Again, we have applied for land and water conservation funds for Phase or the Streamway Park project. And we're still in a holding pattern. We're hopeful we will not be in a holding pattern as long as we were for the decision on Mohawk Phase One, but that will allow us, you'll see in this park program plan at the bottom again, we're not, we're just about great, what I would call break even at the end of twenty twenty four. And then we kind of rebuild. And so that's with the bond proceeds that we issued, that's getting through Waterworks Park, the Streamway Park and Mohawk Phase Two. We've also, Penn and I have had some recent conversations about whether or not we would want to apply for land and water conservation fund grants for Phase Two of Mohawk. I think that makes sense. And I think he's been encouraged by the staff to at least submit the application to see if we can couldn't secure some additional funding, but those have not, those potential grant funds haven't been anticipated or included in this program. So when we look at outdoor park improvement funding completed or anticipated between twenty twenty two and twenty twenty eight, we've got eight and a half million dollars that's invested in our outdoor park system with seven point three of that spent between twenty twenty two and twenty twenty four. So I think I'm proud of that effort. I think the council should be proud that we've really put, you know, we asked the voters to support those improvements, and we've been diligent in getting those improvements done and getting those improvements done quickly. And I think everybody would agree that represents a pretty significant shift in priorities in our Parks and Recreation infrastructure. As we move to the community, and then obviously, the sales tax extends for through twenty thirty three. So if you kind of look at the bottom line impacts in this Park and Parks and Recreation Program Plan, as we kind of get through, the reality is with the staff that we have, we can't, the projects that we have between Mohawk Phase Two, Waterworks, potentially Streamway and the Broadmoor Trail are gonna eat our lunch, pardon my expression, and just in in terms of having the physical ability to manage those and manage those well. I think as we get through those and as we think about potential revenue that could be generated in future years, I think you'll have the opportunity, if you look at some of these numbers at the bottom and your ending fund balances and the Parks and Recreation Program Plan, we may have some opportunities to accelerate some of the improvements and and the other parks as well.
Laura, I have a question about trees, because the the Celebration Tree Program in the parks is in here, both in terms of donations as a revenue source and the expenditure. I know we've talked more about more comprehensive approaches to the tree canopy as a whole. Would that be carried elsewhere in the budget if it was outside of the parks? Per se?
Yes, and some of the and some of the work parks there, the main reason, and we could also make this shift going forward. So we have funded the Celebration Tree Program out of the Special Parks and Recreation Fund. So the two things that are primarily funded out of those revenues each year are the lease on the cardio equipment at the community center and the Celebration Tree Program. So I reflected that here because it makes the numbers cleaner when you match up with the audit going forward, but that's certainly something we could just shift both those revenues and expenses into the general fund if we wanted to keep sort of trees grouped more cohesively or comprehensively together in one spot. And I think Councilmember Crane may have had a question.
Which, if any of our parks have underground water sprinkler systems?
None. In front of, well, that's not true, out in front of the aquatic center. Beverly has them and Beverly Park has it. Okay, so although we've seen improvement in twenty twenty two and continuing to see improvement in twenty twenty three, we still haven't seen a recovery for revenues at the community center to pre pandemic levels. Um, we are still working our way through the feasibility study, um and actually. Um, the those recommendations are going to be coming back in August, not July, as we referenced here. The study focuses um really on maintaining the facility's primary focus as a fitness center. Uh, and a meeting conference center, but I think um as we bring those those recommendations forward, we'll be able, it also includes. Some recommendations in terms of the amount of money that it takes from a capital perspective to maintain a facility like that, so we'll bring all of those forward. Um, deferred maintenance at the community center was a significant concern prior to passage of the first sales tax. And in fact, it was um the group that worked on the outdoor recommendations for the outdoor pool brought forward a recommendation to the council for a quarter cent sales tax. And Council Member Quinn said, we sit up here and talk talk about. The impact and the the deferred maintenance at the community center has on our general fund operations. Um, and so the decision was made to increase that to three eight cents, and I think that has served us well, um. So thanks to a portion of those sales tax revenues over the last ten years, the recent investment from the Facility Conservation Improvement Program. I think our maintenance issues are dramatically improved, um most of the projects anticipated over the next five to ten years are really focused on improving the patron experience. Within the facility, which I think you'll see align with recommendations from. Pros, the feasibility study consultant, so investments at the community center in this C I P. For both capital and maintenance projects total about two point four million or just about sixteen percent. Of the total Parks and Recreation related expenses. Then at the aquatic center, we've already talked about the fact that the initial sales tax. Really was um the kind of impetus for that was a reconstruction of the outdoor aquatic center, which occurred in twenty fourteen. It's about a four point one million dollar renovation, uh. And as I mentioned before, roughly sixty percent of those annual sales tax revenues over the last ten years were dedicated to that debt service. When we retire that, um the expenses that are included. In the five year plan for the M F A C are focused on maintenance and keeping the facility fresh and attractive for users. Um, and expenses related to that facility over the course of this five year plan total about six hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Laura, I have a question, so on the community center, you know, we haven't had the formal presentation from. Pros to counsel about kind of everyone's recommendations and our plan going forward. Um, one of the things just being kind of on the stakeholder committee in that meeting, I know we've kind of. Tried to talk about reimagining space as sort of cost per, you know, how much. You know, per square foot, how much cost does it take to maintain or how much expected revenue could we get as an example? And looking at some of these line items in the years to come and on the expenses, I was just wondering, you know, have we. Put these items in place, kind of having done that assessment already, or is there still movement on some of these, like, for example? Um, I don't know, just picking one kitchen counter replacement, for example. You know, are we saying, yes, we've done that assessment in the kitchen, we still believe that this needs to be a kitchen going forward and like, have we kind of? Have all these kind of ran the gamut per se?
No, we have, they have not yet, so many of them are just sort of carryover placeholders, um and I think you're from, so. You're absolutely right, one of the things that um as we build build a business plan for the community center, it will look at. Operating costs per per square foot, um or. Generally that the cost to operate in any particular space, um we've talked, I think preliminarily about a revenue policy. That we will develop that talks about cost recovery based on the type of activity, uh and then it's really programming the facility in a way that maximizes. Um, those revenue opportunities.
Thank you, and do you know when we'll be kind of having that conversation?
Yeah, it will come forward at your August committee meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Um, really, I think that's, does anybody else have any questions overall and sort of C I P, again, we'll have an opportunity. It's kind of our first pass, but I think pretty close um to what you'll see us bring forward as a final recommended budget. On the capital improvement side, again, pending discussions on some of the connections that the C I P has to the general fund. Okay. All right, thank you.
Laura, is that everything?
I think that concludes our presentation.
We will conclude our work session, thank you.